Bring this meeting to order. It's five thirty, January twenty fourth. Meeting for the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to have a call to order. Do we have a determination of forum?
Yes, will you have a forum? The notice of this meeting was posted on January nineteenth at five p.m.
Okay, thank you. And could you read, go ahead and read the public hearings?
Sure, the first public hearing that we have is to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for a special use permit for applicant Hong Nguyen. The applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of establishing a coin operated business. The property in question is located two thousand East Highway ninety. Record property owner, Vimal Patel.
Thank you. And could you read the second one, please?
Did anybody want to make a comment on that first item?
Well, we haven't gone to that yet.
Well, it's the public hearing section.
Right. So, oh, I'm sorry. My fault, I misread. Okay, so we've read the first public hearing.
We can move on to the second.
Okay, go ahead.
Public hearing to obtain citizen views and comments regarding an application for replat to allow applicants David L. Franks and Linda J. Clay to separate two lots and remove an unnamed platted street and park. The property in question is located at ten ten North Bird Street. Record property owners David L. Franks and Linda J. Clay.
Thank you. And how many people do we have who would like to speak on this issue?
So we do actually have Mr. Franks here and his attorney Mason Griffin by assume, just in case you'll, you'll have questions at the action item section.
Okay. All right, well, thank you for coming. All right, let's move on. The minutes. I'd like to ask everyone, please, to take a minute to look at them and see if there's anything you'd like to change. Or do you accept them as is?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To accept the December sixth, twenty twenty one, regular meeting minutes.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor of accepting the minutes as is, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I will oppose, say nay. Eyes have it. Thank you. Next is the discussion. Do we have any updates commissioners would like to bring before us? Okay, staff updates?
No, we don't have any updates from you today.
Okay, thank you. So then we'll move on to the action items. Since we have, don't have anyone for the first one. Could I ask this court's, this commission's permission to move a little out order? And go ahead and discuss the request for the replat? Okay. All right, so with that, then, I ask for a motion to go ahead and discuss the approval for the replats. It's requested for ten ten North Bird Street.
I'll make a motion to discuss a replat on ten ten North Bird Street.
Okay, motion, name one second. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor of opening discussion on this, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Let's move forward, then. Would you please like to come up here and identify yourself, please?
David Franks, my wife Linda, Linda Clay and I are requesting a replat. Good afternoon, happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Do you have any opening statement or anything you'd like to discuss or first?
We met with the city staff in late October. There's an, apparently some sort of issue regarding this unnamed platted street and a park that's on a vacant lot, vacant piece of property to the south of the house. And in nineteen seventy one, the coconuts sold and conveyed the slot twenty three where the house is, along with this street and the park. That's the only time that this particular, the streets and the park have ever been sold or conveyed. There's no, nothing of record that the coconut's ever dedicated that street and our park, and we're asking to have that removed and to split these two, this property into two lots.
Okay. Thank you.
And we have city staff approval. City attorney and city manager said that, that in fact is the case, that we own the property, that that was never dedicated to the city.
Okay.
And I have copies of the deed that show that, if you'd like to see it.
Okay, thank you very much. So then I'll open it up and I'll start with Lucy, if you have any questions you'd like to ask.
No, not. No.
No? Okay, Marlene?
So you all, right, own everything that you're asking to be?
Ma'am?
You own everything?
Yes.
It's in your name and everything?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wendy?
I'm good.
Your? Okay. How, do you have any neighbors who have expressed any opinion on this?
No.
You know, how many neighbors do you have on either side of this?
There's, there's one neighbor to the south. Belongs and, and then Rick Stephen lives above us.
Okay. And they haven't expressed anything one way or the other?
As far as I know.
They, they always send notices to neighbors within two hundred feet of the property and there were ten of them, we didn't hear back from anyone.
Anyone, okay. And do I understand correctly? You don't plan on building anything on?
Not, not at the present time, but really what we're trying to do is, is at, at the city's suggestion. They highly recommended that we replat to avoid confusion in the future about this, this street and park that was, you know, has never been, I mean, was only conveyed and sold from, directly from the coconut's to this guy named Forrest Walker in nineteen seventy one. This property has been conveyed like that since that time.
I see, okay, so you want to end that, and then you want to split it in half?
Right.
Is all that zone the same right there?
Right, it's all, it's residential and, and, and the, so we'll have about fifty thousand square feet, excuse me, about thirty thousand square feet in the property where the house sits. And then the, the new lot that's being created is point four nine acres, I believe.
So when the subdivision was originally planted, there was like, you know, they planted it with like streets and a little mini park as a circle. But the land was never given to the city, it was never public, it's just the way that they planned it a long time ago. When they came in, they were wondering if they could build on it, and that's what sparked this all. We did research and we engaged with the city attorney and confirmed that they do own it. And their neighbors, for example, built on the other half of what would have been a public park.
Right.
As well.
Long time ago.
So we recommended a replat just to avoid any confusion in the future for them.
Yeah, and so there's a park there?
No.
I'm just sorry.
Do you have a copy of the plan?
Yeah, I just.
I mean, I'll.
Is there any significance to all the rebar that was recorded found there?
I'm sorry?
I just, I saw several reports that said that they find rebar, is there any significance to?
Tiny what?
The rebar, is that what it's called?
Rebar?
Rebar rods?
Yeah, I know.
It's in all of the field notes.
Oh, right.
Reporting.
Oh, that's for the survey?
No, that's.
Right.
Yeah, that's just survey.
Oh, they put the rebar down for the survey?
For the corners.
For the corner.
Oh, I see, okay.
Right.
Got it.
So the road that's planted, it's never been used, I take it, for any reason or?
No.
Never named?
No, never publicly owned and councillor Jerry Johnson lives up there as well and it means the same thing, it was just originally planted or planned a certain way, but the land would never belong to the city.
Yeah, so the coconut's, I think, wanted to do, but they never did it. But they had this map, this file of record. It's not signed by the owner. Not signed by the city, but signed by the county. So there's never any dedication of this street, these streets. So.
That's the reason why we can't approve it, I mean, just get this fixed.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
On the cheapie monitor, Abby?
Abby, okay. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you there, Abby. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask?
No, no, I don't.
One second, Abby, we can't hear you.
I know, I didn't see her. I just saw her wait.
I guess you can have a question, so.
No, I don't have a question. I don't.
She, she doesn't.
No, she doesn't. Okay.
We should be good.
Okay, can she? Abby, can you hear us?
Hi, everyone, sorry, I'm not able to be there today, can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay, can you hear me now? It's okay.
Abby, can you hear us?
I can, yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, sorry, I'm not able to be there today, y'all, I'm a bit under the weather. But I don't have any questions, I read over everything on the I guess that, the plat division. And the only, I guess the only question I do have is that, how, what was the acreage number in square footage?
Hi. Point four seven acres, twenty thousand six hundred and eighty six square feet on the vacant portion. And then point seven two acres on the portion that the house is on.
Okay. That was it, I have no other questions.
Thank you. No other questions?
No.
Anymore? Okay. So then if we don't have any questions and may I go ahead and ask for a motion to prove a recommendation to city council regarding an application for replat to allow applicant David L. Franks and Linda C. J. Clay to separate two lots and remove an unnamed platted street and park? The address is ten ten North Bird Street, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a second, motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Please indicate by saying aye, aye?
Aye.
Okay. Eyes have it. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Okay, let's move on now to a approval recommendation to city council regarding an application for a special use permit for the applicant Hong, how do you pronounce his last name?
Nguyen.
Nguyen. Applicant is requesting a special use permit for the purpose of establishing a coin operation business to be located at two thousand East Highway ninety. Record property owner is Vimal Patel. Do I have a motion to discuss this?
I'll make a motion that we discuss this one.
Okay, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Now let's open up to the floor, is there anyone here who would like to discuss this?
I think Daryl's on screen for this one.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Chief, whenever you're ready.
Before I do?
Well, I'm here, not for Hong, but I'm here to see. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem.
Sorry, sorry.
No problem.
My name is Dornal Leboz. And I'm not here for Hong. I'm just here to see what the result of this is gonna come through because there's another person that I was contacted by another person. I know he goes by John, and he wanted to know if, if Hong was gonna, if Hong was gonna be able to open this business, if not, if he could come in.
Oh, okay, well, all right, well, that's a separate issue, but thank you. Okay, so then let's go to the chief.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the, I actually have the application here by Hong Nguyen. And the, according to the application, the name of the applicant is, is Hong Nguyen. And the documents, the court documents are in reference to a Nat Fan Nguyen. Which, which are the, there's a letter in there from the Brewster County Attorney in reference to a dismissal.
Yes.
So is this the same person?
No.
Can just go ahead and.
Chief, please.
Chief, this is, Hong Nguyen is the applicant that is the owner operator of the coin business. This is his wife, I believe they're married. Nguyen, the fun Nguyen is, he goes by Nathan, he wants to be an employee, and that's why I put the dismissal letter with his employee DPS form.
Okay, okay.
He's not the actual applicant for the, the owner operator.
Okay, so Hong is, is his wife?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, understand, okay. So, understanding that there is a dismissal for the case from Brewster County Attorney, the I, I have no reason to, 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 to deny him this request. The, his, his criminal history will, will show that he's, that he's gonna be clear. Understanding that he still has the record for the arrest, but the, the offense is still on his criminal history. So it doesn't show that it, there's, there's that, a conviction there. The next thing is, the there are pending cases that, but they haven't been processed through the district attorney's office yet. And it's not through, through Alpine Police Department, but through Department of Public Safety. The, the next thing, the location is at two thousand East Highway ninety, that's over on the east side of Alpine, over at the Value Lodge. The only thing that I, that I can recommend, that I recommend to the, to your board is to follow up later on with, with some different ordinances to, to get to the council.
Okay, can you discuss the cases?
What? Well, he was originally charged with, with, with gambling, keeping a gambling place. The, the charges that, that he's looking at, I'm, I'm waiting to get confirmation from the district attorney's office on, as far as the, as far as the future charges.
Chief, how many of these game rooms do we have in town now?
We currently have two, we have the one over on Holland and we have the one over on Murphy.
Are they still? Three?
There's three. There's one on East Avenue E, chief.
Right, right, but I don't think that was an actual operation, am I correct?
It's, they say they're open part time, whatever that means.
Okay, yeah, I, I don't, I haven't, I haven't seen any cars there recently, so I figured it was closed.
Well, their license is still.
So does this person have another? Already have another establishment?
Yeah. Yes, the one on Murphy.
They, they operate two.
Sorry?
They operate two out of the three.
Two out of the three, so.
No, it's not open. There's something taxes on it, so it's considered open.
Okay. Please, I'll recognize you if you need to say something. So they own, they have, they're operating two of the three?
Yes, sir.
The one on Murphy Street and which is the second one?
The one over by the, one or not?
One or two, okay.
Are the permits, and are all the other permits in the wife's name?
No, so based off of the way the coin operator works is, they, they've used different licenses for it, but they're like employees under those licenses. So they've used other people's licenses and I've contacted the comptroller to find out how that works, because coin operated business is something new to me and I don't know what's right and what's wrong, what's legal and what's not. It's a very new business in my, in my eyes. So I called the comptroller and asked him, and as long as they have a general coin operated business and the, the owner signs off on his license to allow them to work under them, they can do that. So the one at two oh four Murphy is not under Nguyen or Hong's name, it's under somebody else's name, under somebody else's license, but they are employees under them, so they run it. They, they are.
The managers.
The managers, and, and the other one over on the longer mat, Nguyen is the license holder, he owns, he's the license holder and he has the employee, he also has employees. And on this one, he's using his wife's license, which is a new one, she just applied for. And he's gonna be, he wants to be the employee under her license, so it's pretty much the same people kind of.
And I have a question. Didn't we decide in a few, a few meetings ago that a representative if, for the coin operated machines needed to be present at planning and zoning?
Yes, we did.
Yeah. Yeah.
And we were gonna come up with some ordinance too, weren't we?
Well, we did, and it was, we voted in our August meeting, I think it was August twenty third meeting to limit the number of coin operated machines to four. That was presented to council. And that was presented to council in November. And a council member voted that there could be an unlimited amount of machines. So we, you know, well, I mean, this will probably come up again. But it was also, you know, there were members of the community that spoke about this, like, about, you know, their, their beliefs, why we needed to, to not implement a maximum number of machines. And, I mean, I can go into detail on the notes I took, but but we, we, so, but the main thing is, I think in that same meeting or meeting before, we decided that a representative had to be present in order for us to vote on any new machines or, or facilities.
Right.
Isn't that, is that not right?
No, you know, you did, you all did express that you would like to see somebody here, but there was no, no rule or anything ever set in place that y'all had to speak to.
It was just.
It's just a recommendation, pretty much. I'm, I'm not sure that we could really require that.
You can't require somebody to be present.
And we have publicized this, you know, within, you know, the long publication timeframes. Plus, we've already publicized for the council meeting that there will be a public hearing, et cetera. So it's definitely best that you all make a recommendation tonight, but regardless, it'll go to council after as well.
I see, so if, if we recommend it, if, if we recommend this, it's gonna, or if we don't recommend it, it goes to council anyway?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you would, tonight you'd be either recommending approval or recommending to not approve it?
Okay.
But they can still only have four machines or?
No, there's currently an unlimited amount of.
Okay. At only four locations or allow, correct?
That's correct.
Four and four, but if they, if, if it doesn't get voted to only have four machines per location, then we can't come back to it?
No, you can come back to it, and I've already had a request added to the next agenda, so P and Z can just discuss it. And the council wasn't opposed to setting a limit, but they thought, in, in my opinion, it seemed like they thought four was a bit restrictive. So I think really what happened in that meeting is they wanted to go back to the drawing board and, you know, do some research as to what limit might work.
And does anything, have they come up with anything yet, or that's still?
No, it's been pending, so I think it's a great opportunity for you all to review it again and see what kind of recommendation that you might wanna make to them as far as the limit is concerned.
And you have put that on the agenda for our next meeting?
For the next one, yes.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, so what would we like to do on this? Anyone else wanna discuss it?
Chief, you said that where was this gonna be located? You said at the value, and it's over there?
Yeah, it's like across from Pizza Hut.
I heard.
Across from Pizza Hut, where the little.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Where the press box. There's press boxes to be there, yeah.
Okay.
They've had a coin operated business in that building before. They they had a different operator in there before. It's already been a coin operated business, and that one. Became inactive, and so that location opened back up. So it's already been a coin operated business in that location before.
Well, I I don't I don't feel comfortable. I I mean, you know, Chief has already expressed to us that there's still charges that are pending. And I I just, I don't feel comfortable. That's just me.
You don't feel comfortable with what, this application?
With, yeah, I mean, and having all these different, you know, like the charges that are pending. And then having different people, different, like, why? Why? It it just seems so secretive, or it just doesn't seem right. I'm not gonna vote for it.
I don't understand why they have other people.
Do you? What would you like? Yeah, what's your?
I wanna recommend that we table this to the next one, to the next meeting.
Well, as I understand, we have to. It has to go to the city council. We can vote, we can recommend.
But it's not gonna be going to city council.
Okay. But what we have an impact on is what's gonna be on the agenda for next meeting is actually figure out the ordinance that will govern this, right?
Yeah, and you can recommend an ordinance to city council. I'd be happy to help you all with what we've come up, you know, with before.
Okay, so let's let's work on that. And. Do you have any questions, Wendy?
No, I'm in agreeance.
Abby, do you have anything you'd like to say about it?
No, but I I do think that everyone should take time to read over the ordinance. I mean, I know we do, but I mean, but this one is an important one for us. And then on, you know, there is, can, there is section ninety dash one twelve that says, you know, it shall be unlawful for any person while in a skill or pleasure coin operated machine. Establishment to gamble, make bets, consume, et cetera. And then there's a follow up, section ninety dash one thirteen. That says that in addition to any other penalty or punishment imposed by law. Violation of this section shall cause for revocation of skill or pleasure coin operated machine if they are found guilty. Now, they weren't apparently per the the note here. From Liz Rogers' office. The they were not found guilty, but per Daryl's comment is that they're charged. Dean, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, please repeat that.
Okay, which part, where where did I cut out?
Just the last part, just like the last.
So I guess my que- our question is, because this is the the other establishment. I I think that what red flagged it was the letter to Liz Rogers from the. Where is it? And I I guess I was confused as to why that was included. But now we understand that was because it was for the husband of the applicant. Is that correct?
The husband failed his background check for his employment.
I see. Okay.
So and every employee that works for a coin operated business has to have a background check. And so every time a new employee comes into a coin operated business, they have to be, they have to go through that process. So. He failed his, and he had his dismissal letter to show that what he was arrested for in what he wasn't, he wasn't guilty of. But it's worth it.
So he was, yeah, so that so but the charges are, they're still pending? Is that what Daryl said?
That's for something else.
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right.
We don't know what that something else is, whether it's related or not.
Not yet, because I haven't filed this first.
What exactly is gambling promotion? Does that mean?
Well, I don't get this business at all. I I don't understand where it, I mean, apparently people put coins and machines and where they're getting stuffed animals in return. It doesn't make any sense. And. That's why I prefer to have someone here to explain the business how it works to me. And I'm also concerned about all these charges or pending charges. I mean, you just don't have that issue with people having laundromats or restaurants or any other business. This is very weird to me.
And I think maybe, I don't know, Abby heard when Chief was explaining that to us about the other charges.
Yeah, well, yeah, I've heard those, and I mean, it just, this is very. I don't get too far afield, but I'm uncomfortable with it without more information. So unless anyone else has any quite more questions or comments, let's go ahead and vote. And.
You'll make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, and and you can just go however you want to, okay? And then I'll remind you all that at our next meeting, we will actually have something to work with. These ordinances concerning this business type of business, okay? All right. Thank you, Abby. So then. I'd like to ask for a motion. To approve. This application for a special use permit. Do I have a motion for that? And also, you can explain, you can you can pass a motion and then vote. However you want. You can vote the other way, but this is just to get it rolling, because as I understand, we have to send this to onto the city council. Okay, so can I have a motion to vote on this?
So I'm sorry, but if we vote to approve it?
Well, we're voting that we can that we can vote on it.
Hey.
Right? That's the motion. Do we have a motion? Then you can vote against it if you want, or vote for it.
Okay.
But I need the motion so that we can move forward on this.
Okay.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we move forward.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor. Of recommending this application for a special use permit, please indicate by saying aye. All those opposed, indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, nays have it. Abby? Okay. All right. So nays have it, and. Thank you very much for that. Now go on to this council, is that correct, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, yes, this recommendation, it'll be that y'all recommended to tonight, yes, but it'll be at the city council meeting next Tuesday.
Okay. That's fine. Okay, let's move on then. Board member comments?
I'm having.
No?
No, so how are we gonna do these ordinance? We're gonna have another meeting to discuss these ordinance or?
Which these? No, what next meeting now, as I understand, is we're we're gonna get the. What is it? The?
So there was, a commissioner did already request to have a discussion item regarding the coin operated machine ordinance.
Okay.
But I mean, y'all are welcome to reach out to me as well if you want to add anything additional. Or workshop any of the other ordinances. You can just start, you know, give me a call, and we can discuss it.
Okay, and that's on the agenda for our next meeting, right?
The discussion about the coin operated, yes, it will be.
Yes, okay, and we'll be able to go through the research and come up with our recommendations on this, right?
Yeah, well, you generally, I mean, typically you'll have it as a discussion item, and then the next meeting you will have an action item. So during the discussion, whatever the commission decides, based on that, I can put it together, and then the next meeting it would be proposed as an action.
Yeah, it's workshop based.
Yeah.
Okay, so answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
And the charges, when will we know what the other charges are, or will we?
If that becomes an issue, we'll find out. If not.
Okay.
You know, it's public record. You can always find out on your own.
Okay.
Okay. Any other?
No.
Questions you have? Okay. Abby?
No, we're good.
Okay.
I'll see you next month.
All right. Sounds good. Hopefully we can see you in person by then.
Yes.
Feel better.
Okay, then with that, I'll call in German, and thank you all very much for coming.
Thank you.